Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 16th, and we will call this meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. And we'll first start. Trustee Stone Cypher is going to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you. Lord, we humbly come before you today. We thank you for this time here together. We thank you for this wonderful institution that we can all be a part of. Thank you so much for the hard work of our administrators, our faculty and our staff over the last few months and what we know will continue in the months to come. We ask, Lord, that in this difficult time, you would give us strength to do the hard things, that you would help us stand for what's fair and what's just in this world. I ask that you would allow us to shine bright, the light of equality, and that you could fill our hearts with empathy and grace for our fellow men and women, for fellow humans. And most importantly, Lord, that we can love others as you have shown how to love us. I thank you so much for this community that we live in. I ask that St. Pete College and those that are part of it can offer something great for those who live here, can offer an opportunity for anyone in our community, no matter their background, where they come from, or how they got to us. I ask that you would help guide us today with decisions being made, that you would give us wisdom. We just thank you so much for the opportunity that you've given us here. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll move on to our recognitions and our SPC spotlights. Dr. Williams.
Thank you so much, Chair Cole. It's been an exciting month since we last met. I want to give a shout out to Dr. Nan Morelli White and Dr. Dawn Joyce in the Communications Department for presenting a peer-reviewed article called "Adapting to Change One Class at a Time" in the Journal of Higher Education Theory and Practice. And this has been published. And I just want to applaud our faculty for the work that they have done and the changes that they are making in the lives of many. I also want to applaud our workforce group. Each year, we receive industry certification funds, and we had a goal of $700,000. And we were just recently awarded $739,000. The state has released its CARES Act Grant Opportunity Funds, and they have given funds to each institution. There are five institutions that received or will get a chance to obtain more than $2 million, and SPC is one of those. To get these funds, we have to write how we would spend them on short-term programs, high-wage-paying programs. And we would have to have a 25% match. And so, we are very excited about that as we look at our line worker programs, surgical tech, mental health tech, and some other unique programs. As you know, new programs will also bring, not only economic mobility for our residents, but will also bring the revenues for the institution. And I want to applaud the college family because, again, they have continued to keep us moving forward. Our summer enrollment is up over what we had planned for, and we're really excited about that. And we still have one more summer semester that has not started, and we have opportunities to grow there. And so, we're real proud of the work that's been done, the flexibility of the faculty and the staff, our frontline workers, the central workers who show up every day to keep the engine running. I just want to say how proud I am of them and the work that they have done to keep students learning and to keep employees working. And so, that would be my main report for overviews today.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll move on to our comments from the board. And I did want to take a few minutes. Dr. Williams released a message to the college community and to the community at large in light of the turmoil and racial discourse that has been going on in the country and our community. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank her for doing that. She always shows leadership around controversial situations. And one thing that I've been proud of in the college and one of the reasons why I feel passionate about serving the college is the platform that a college provides for all voices to be heard. The community of care that was established when Dr. Williams joined as president is the basis for her leadership and the basis for what the actions this board has taken. And we need to be solution-oriented. We obviously denounce violence, racism, oppression in all forms, and we fight for equality on a regular basis throughout the college. And we're committed to that. You can see that through our strategic plan and through our funding. And it's part of the history and part of the basis of being a college, but we know it's not enough. And we need to take action to move forward and to make change. Higher education is the engine for this change. I feel strongly about that. And we need to be a facilitator to continue that change and to stay in the forefront to provide voices for everyone. We will remain an integral part of the solution for our community. And Dr. Williams, I know, has been having meetings with employees and faculty and staff and students, and we'll continue that to keep the dialogue going. But again, dialogue is not enough, but it's our job to provide the safe space for these conversations. So know that it will take all of us working together to create true change. And I'm proud of where we've come from as a college, and I'm proud of where we're going. And I had these remarks prepared in conjunction with Dr. Williams. And I just wanted to share that because it just... We... Dr. Williams said to me last week, and I think this rings true, that we need to continue to look at our students and each other to know what we need, and we need to listen. And I commit to doing that, and I know each of my fellow trustees commit to doing that. And thank you for giving us the time to say those words. Other board members? It doesn't have to be on anything heavy. It can be great things going on.
I echo what you said, Ms. Cole, and thank you for showing leadership with Dr. Williams and that. And we're, of course, can 100% support and agreement going forward. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Chair Cole, I'll speak up. Dr. Williams and I hosted a very important business leader conversation week before last where we had almost 600 people register and almost 500 attend. And I'll say what I always say is she did an amazing job of representing the college and the community as a whole. I mean, she's an amazing speaker, but it was so touching to see the engagement that we got from that conversation with the business leaders, not only in Tampa Bay, but around the state and even some nationally. So, thank you for being part of that, Dr. Williams. And I hope, if you guys haven't seen it, that you take the chance to go back and see it. It's recorded and can be found on my website.
Thank you, Trustee Vello. Any other trustee reports? Dr. Williams, we'll move to your president's comments.
Thank you so much. And I definitely agree that we started working on the equity agenda and closing the achievement gaps over a year ago. Dr. Smiley and Dr. Strickland put the committee together, the really deep-dive look at what's happening. We learned that we needed to do better in our hiring of minorities and where they're placed. We also learned that we need to do better in closing the achievement gaps. And so, in December, you challenged us to make this happen. And so, the equity position has been advertised, and the interviews have started. And the position for the Brother to Brother Initiative has also been started. But I think there's some other information that you'll be glad to know. Looking at our spring data and what happened from the fall, even with COVID, we did have a higher number of students who withdrew. Many of them were going through a lot of situations. We knew that. But the good news is that our African-American student success rates increased. Our black male student success rates in Gateway classes increased 13.7%. Our African-American male student success comparison from last spring to this spring increased just 7.2%. And our Hispanic males increased somewhat as well. What really made me excited about what we're doing is we were already on the trail for the community of care and working to close those achievement gaps of men and women from different socioeconomic backgrounds. We've been looking at this from a ZIP Code standpoint as well to look at the five poverty areas. There's still a lot more work that we need to do to help students succeed and focusing on how we instruct, how students learn, how we engage our students. But even during COVID, our overall success rates were basically the same, which was a surprise. We had anticipated that they would decline significantly, but they were about the same number. And so, we'll definitely come back with a real report, but this is the data that I've received regarding the successes that we have made in spite of COVID. And I would say a lot of it has to do with the flexibility of the faculty and working with students, the college giving out the technology needed and providing around-the-clock tutoring and other support services. But to see that we're well on our way to close those gaps, they're still wide. There's still a lot of work to do. But we're making change a little at a time. And so, I'm very proud of that work and looking forward to getting us even more successful in improving the experience of all.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you.
That is really good news about the achievement of all of the students in light of the difficult classroom situation we've had and especially appreciate the update on our specific goals with respect to African-American men. So, thank you for that. With that, it's time for public comment. Do we have any members of the public who have requested to speak?
Chair Cole, we do not have any public comment.
Thank you. And I appreciate... We're doing this with the time delays as well for technology, so we appreciate that. Thank you so much. So with that, I'll ask for a motion or comments with respect to the... And I'm sorry, I'm trying to find this here. With respect to the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from the May 19th meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For the purpose of any opposed? For the purpose of voting, we do have to vote on a few things, so it might be more efficient. We can go ahead and raise our hands, and that way, we don't have to unmute at the same time. So, the more of these I do, the little tips I pick up. So... So with that, Ms. Gardner, I don't believe you have a report.
I do not. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Moving on to our strategic focus. And I wanted to say thank you to the board and to Dr. Williams. There is an update in your plan, but a couple of months ago, when we first went to virtual learning, I challenged Dr. Williams and her team to say, "What are we going to do with our strategic plan?" This plan is one that the board has spent a significant amount of time investing in. And we spent last year developing and then refined it for our one-year goal in December. And we saw in March that there was the potential that we were just going to have to throw it out, depending on how things went. And Dr. Williams, in her own tenacious way, wouldn't let me even suggest that and continued to just record her findings. But that being said, there is a dashboard in your package that doesn't show... And I'm looking at for my updated package. I apologize. But we also, Dr. Williams provided... And I don't know if you want to go through kind of the refined priority goals. One thing I did ask her to do was say, "Okay, knowing that the state hasn't confirmed our budget yet, knowing that we're expecting or potentially we're going to have a decline in enrollment because of the uncertainty surrounding how classes, what are our priorities?" And it's unfortunate because in March is when the board was supposed to have its first meeting with the administrative team in our small groups to start going through these in earnest. And those have been sidetracked. But I think you'll be pleased to hear Dr. Williams' report on kind of how we're moving forward on those types of things.
Thank you, Chair Cole. Do we want to... Chair Cole, go ahead and do the budget first because that's what's next, or do you...
Sure.
Okay.
And I apologize. I have my outdated agenda sitting in front of me from last week instead of the new one that we printed. So...
Okay. So, we'll start with the budget. We've had an opportunity to meet with most of the board members to go over the budget and answer the questions that we have. So, Ms. Hunt, if you would like to take it over?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, Dr. Williams, all of the board trustees. Again, thank you again for meeting us and reviewing the budget, asking the questions. And we appreciate taking that time with you all. One of the things that I want to state before going into the budget is... And Chair Cole, you mentioned it as well, is that we continue to look at our strategic priorities to continue driving principles to allocate our funding. And so, although you may see here some realignment, a lot of it is really due to streamlining and really looking at enhancing our business model, which you'll see within this presentation. So, the next slide, please. So first, really looking at our operating fund and our student tuition and fees. And so, we've had a lot of discussion about, you know, what the trend will be, where are we, what's the trend across the nation, looking specifically at the other state colleges who are projecting anywhere from 10% to 30% decline. We looked at that, and based on where we are and our location as well, we settled at about 10% decline in enrollment. One of the pieces that I want to mention with that is that that is the budget amount. It's not necessarily the stretch goal. So, we will continue to look at our enrollment retention and have a plan to still increase our enrollment. And so, the next line item is our funding. And so, state funding is about $76.1 million. And if you would click on the Legislative Appropriation link, I will show you in detail where we are. So, you're familiar with this chart. We went over it last month. And I just want to highlight a couple of things here. One, it is still unapproved. So, it's still not an approved General Appropriation Act. We will be using the proposed act for the budget. The other item, as I want to mention, is the $1 million shift from our general appropriations to our lottery, which directly impacts our cash flow. And then, lastly, also just wanting to point out, the Student Success Initiative Fund, which is our tiered fund model, the $687,000 in the appropriation. Just keep in mind that it is based on enrollment. So, at some point, the Department of Education will look at our enrollment and possibly adjust this amount. So, you'll see in the budget, we have added the $687,000. We have not allocated it yet to specific funding, but that allocation will be to incentive programs and to increase our enrollment. So, if we'll go back, please. Thank you. So, the next line item is our other revenue, which is a little under $5 million. This is some of our miscellaneous revenue, our contract with our Pinellas County School Board, rental facilities, et cetera. And then, the other item I would like to point out is our fund transfers in, which is transfers from our auxiliary fund. We continue to see a reduction in our bookstore commission sales. Some of it is really based off of students are going other places to purchase books. There are also free eBooks that are available. So, that continues to be a trend with our bookstore commissions. Also, for our food store, our food service commissions, we've seen some decline there, and that's specifically directed to the coronavirus pandemic. The other thing I'd like to point out with the auxiliary fund is that fund is the most flexible fund that we have here at the college. So, we wanted to reduce the reliance on that sum. This line item will not decrease entirely, and that is because some of the expenses that are incurred from the operating budget must be supported by funds outside of our tuition and state funding. So, the next line item is our reserves. And so, you know, we have had a plan to reduce our reliance on reserves. At one point in our budget, we had a reoccurring close to $5 million that supported our expenses. We no longer do that. In the current fiscal year, we have about $1.7 million of reserve. Majority of that was for a one-time pay to all employees at the end of 2019 year. And then, the $300,000 of it was specifically for professional development. And for the last couple of years, we have included that line item in the reserves in case we specifically needed that for additional professional development. We anticipate in this current fiscal year that although we executed the one-time pay, we will not be using the reserve. So, we're actually trending to where we still will not use it. So, that's good news. When it comes to the upcoming budget 2021, we have here allocated $1.4 million. And so, I want to spend a little time breaking that down. $400,000 of that is really due to accounting principles. Typically, we're able to absorb the prior year encumbrances that happened after '71. With reducing the budget by about $3.5 million, it was more to add it in just as a safeguard, just in case we needed to use that. But those expenses are approved in the current year budget. The other line item that's in there is, again, the $300,000 professional development. And so, our thought process there was really that, you know, post-COVID and really increasing our online modality, we really wanted to have some dedicated funds for things like faculty and learning new and inventive ways on how to teach online. And then, the remaining is $724,000, which is really a safety net because, again, the budget is conservative, but it is a tight budget based on the circumstances that we're in at this point and the information that we have as of now. And so, I don't anticipate using it, but it is there as a just-in-case. And so, this brings us to a $140 million revenue budget. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. And so, now to look at our operating fund. First, our personnel and benefits. We see here there's about a $4.6 million reduction. Some of it is due to personnel attrition. We just have individuals that are retired. Of course, their salaries are much more than what we hire in it, and so, there were savings there. We also had some position... A few position eliminations and some changes that we made to the personnel piece. The next thing is the adjunct and supplemental. Organically, if enrollment is down, you would see also a decrease in instructional costs. And so, we anticipate about a 10% decline in our adjunct and supplemental costs. Next is the health insurance. This continues to be a factor for us. Health insurance continues to be an issue across the nation. You will see in a couple of months of presentation about some of the options that we've looked at and some proposals on what we would like to implement for our health insurance plan. And then, next are our Florida retirement rate increases. That was a 1.5% increase, and so, that equated to a little over $1 million, which gives us a personnel budget of $107 million. The next areas are our current expense and our capital. We continue to have our modified zero-based budgeting. We did look at specific line items closely to reduce some of them. But I will say there are a couple of items that increased. So, one of them is our insurance, which is our non-health insurance piece. And so, and from fiscal year 2018, 2019 to the current year, there was actually a 30% increase. And so, we're anticipating another 10% to 13% increase in the next fiscal year. We did adjust our travel. Basically, due to the coronavirus, we just haven't been traveling as we used to. Next is for our collegiate high school and the tiered model. So, I mentioned on the revenue side that the tiered model, we did not allocate it to specific funds yet. We really wanted to wait to see where our enrollment was and what the state was going to do with the adjustment before we actually allocate those dollars out. For the collegiate high school, that dollar amount is also in the state funding, as you saw on the detailed chart. But this is really acting as a pass-through. So, it's coming through the operating fund and then transferring out if approved by the governor. And then, lastly, I want to mention in this area is the technology lease shift. And so, technology industry is more remote. It is also moving more to the cloud. And so, we're seeing that we're spending less funding on leasing equipment and more on things like licensing and software. This gives us a total operating balance budget of $140 million. So, I want to talk on the next slide. I want to talk a little bit more about our financial plan and where we may be in some of our targets for our enrollment. And so, on the right side, you will see... On the right side, you will see a chart. And so, this chart really is attributed to enhancing our business model and really coming up with a plan for every percentage change that we have in our enrollment. And really gives the college a resource to look at and keep track of as we're going through the semester. This particular chart really looks at only the fall semester. And so, just to kind of explain the chart, for the fall semester, we're targeting about 211,000 student semester hours, or also known as credit hours. For each percentage change, for example, if we increase that student semester hour by 1%, that would be an additional $201,000 approximately. If it declines by 1%, then that's a negative $201,000. You see here where we've highlighted 4%. When we get to 4%, this is where we start to look at some of the more ways to recover from that plan. And so, we'll see here where percentages 1, 2, 3, we're either able to absorb or we have actions that we're doing in order to create a savings and offset that. This kind of leads me to the left side of the slide, which is our sustainability actions. Options 1 and 2, these are just things we need to do. Options one and two, these are just things we need to do as an organization, just reducing surplus spending. You all are aware that we have been realigning the budget for a few years now, really going in, finding efficiencies. There's one thing to just take a five percent or ten percent cut, but we really need to start digging a lot deeper into each area, each process, each business model, and really say exactly, you know, what do we really need to spend here? What is our best return on investment? And return on investment, it doesn't have to always be dollar amount, but at least we'll be able to see that and make decisions based on what that is. The number two is just, again, restructuring our business model. And this target chart really is one of those first efforts to do that. Number three is something that may or may not happen. And so this is just implementing our recovery plan. So as I mentioned, we've looked at each step of percentage change and said, what could we possibly absorb and what could we do? Knowing that at that four percent, we will actually have to implement that recovery plan. And so this is last month, I talked about looking at the exercises of reduced salary pay and furloughs. So before I go on to the capital budget, are there any questions on the operating budget or the financial plan?
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. I know the trustees, most of us met with you individually to go through this to have our questions answered. But Mr. Gibbons, I don't know if you had that opportunity and if you have questions. I had one question, just out of curiosity, because since I've been on the board, we've continued to reduce our reliance on reserves and reduce our expenses. Based on our budget, do you have any idea of what the how much we've ended up cutting out of the budget over the past three or four years?
Yes, it's a little over ten million dollars.
Ten million, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? I I know you said this as well. We're going to need a motion to approve it as well and to, so we can transmit to the state. I think we'll, and we'll do that after we get the capital outlay. But I I know you mentioned this, but I think it's important just to reiterate to the public who might be watching that we know that the state is going to be modifying its budget, and we know that there may be a shift in some of these line items. And so I am happy that you've continued to look at ways to restructure the business model. We're continuing to challenge our individual departments. We're looking at health insurance and a lot of these other big-ticket items. We received that big hit this year with the retirement fund to be funded. So I know there's a lot of moving parts, and I appreciate looking at it overall like this.
Thank you. And trustee Chair Cole, I also want to add to part of that ten million. We used to have a practice of really holding on to positions even though they were vacant for many years. And so that was also in the first wave of allocation, realignment. It really attributed to a lot of those positions that we just held for years and just continued to keep it in the budget. Now it's really more about fine tuning and looking at every area of the college.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions by the trustees, comments, before we move on to capital improvement? Okay, moving on.
Okay, so next, I'd like to present to you the capital outlay budget. So first, this overall, the budget is thirty-five point one million dollars. Of that six point seven million is capital improvement fees, which are fees paid by the students per credit hour. That funding will be attributed to two point seven million dollars, which is for our construction bond payments. Next, we will be paying twelve point six million for our major construction projects. This includes the St. Pete Give Student Success Center, completing that project. Also, the downtown build-out for the D O migration and the Clearwater BT building renovation. We also have included in here the two point, the two million dollars for the collegiate high, if that is approved. The next section of funding that's been allocated is nine point one million. This is for our roof restorations, chiller replacement, any deferred maintenance or renovations that are needed across the college campuses. And then the next one point one million dollars is for internal construction personnel. These are the individuals that work on some of the projects that we have across the college. Next, we have one point four million dollars. This is for any existing projects, miscellaneous expenses, and also includes some of the smaller campus projects that we have. And then lastly, about eight point three million dollars. I will mention that included in this budget is the sale proceeds for the district office building. We have the proceeds included in the eight point three million dollars for contingency. And a few things I'd like to note on the contingency topic is, one, we continued for the second year, we have not got, received some of digit funding, which is specifically for our deferred maintenance. And so we will need to really look at our contingency, keep our reserves up, and so in order to mitigate those costs, especially if the state continues to not fund those soda dollars. Also, keeping this aside as well for preparing for hurricane seasons each year. And then also, as we look more into our properties and updating them, we are, could possibly go into P three, and so we may need additional funding there in order to come to the table. And that is the capital budget. Any questions there? If there are no questions at this time, I'd like to seek approval on adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating fund budget, which includes two million dollar transfer from our auxiliary fund and the fiscal year twenty twenty-one capital outlay fund budget.
And just to clarify quickly, when we get more information from the state, and this will change and be tweaked slightly, we will see what those changes are and discuss as we move forward, correct, Ms. Hunt?
Correct.
Okay.
Chair, can we take these separately?
Yes. Yes. Do you have, let's have comments on both, I think. So we'll seek first for the operating fund budget. Is there a motion to accept?
I move to accept the operating fund budget proposal.
There a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Gibbons is opposed, but with no discussion. Regarding the capital outlay fund budget, is there a motion?
I move to approve the capital outlay budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving on to strategic planning, which I tried on my outdated agenda to do earlier. Mr. Gray, I think everybody's anxious to hear the comeback task force recommendations and plans. So we'll turn it over to you.
Very good. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Trustee members, and thank you for the opportunity to share with you a overview of our comeback plan. I do believe you have started, actually, I believe you have received a copy of the original plan. And I want to indicate to you that is available in English as well as Spanish. So you should have a copy of that. First slide, please. As you can see, the comeback task force is a cross-functional team made up of faculty, students, and staff. Particularly, we include four of our students to participate with us in this effort, and we received a lot of good feedback and information from those students. So we certainly want to have a shout out to those particular individuals for assisting our teams and in putting the plan together. Next slide, please. As we mentioned to you last month in our overview of our comeback plan, we did work off of three core pillars, one being safety, which is the ensuring the health, safety, and well-being of our college community. The second pillar was stability, minimizing the financial impact to students and employees. And the third pillar was the student piece, advancing our student success agenda and keep students learning. I do want to express a thank you to Dr. Nativia Middleton for chairing the Core One pillar in safety, to Michael Meggs for chairing the Stability Core Pillar, and to Dr. Leslie Hafer for coordinating the Student Core Pillar for our team. Next slide, please. As you can see from the graphic here, we have determined various safety guidelines and sanitation guidelines for our safety and wellness core pillar. We plan to have face-to-face classes, up to twenty percent of the scheduling priority placed on hands-on learning classes, labs, and some general education courses. Face coverings will be required when social distancing cannot be maintained. Social distancing of six feet will be maintained, including adjusted classroom and lab seating positions. Hand sanitation wipes and soap availability for personal sanitation will be available. Wayfinding signs and floor markers, similar to what we've seen in our public markets as well as other businesses, will be available for our buildings as well. And then we have the use of electrostatic disinfecting of all common in classroom areas, along with our traditional cleaning methods will be used in that particular area. Next slide, please. As you can see, we've developed a symptom checker, which is very similar to what many other colleges and universities are using. If for some reason there is a report of an active case or a positive case, that will be reported to the immediate supervisor. Or in the case of students, it can be reported to the campus administration or to my office under emergency management. My office has developed a email address so that my office can be contacted initially if something should occur on one of our campuses regarding any positive testing of faculty, students, or staff. Next question, or next slide, please. Stability, this is an area that, as you can see from the first icon there, individual transition plans required for partners and SBC departments to be on campus. This particular team assessed the joint use facility agreements very closely to be sure that the partners' plans were in alignment with our college plans and so that there was a smooth transition there when we begin the reopening process. In the area of technology installations and enhancements plan, developed in alignment with the face-to-face class schedule. Here, we were looking at making sure that our instructional continuity plan would be able to continue with campus and distance learning, as well as including the ability for our employees to continue to work with some flexibility, either remotely or where technology is needed, and they were provided that opportunity as well to work, continue to work remotely. So both students and faculty and staff were included in this particular piece of the stability plan. The area of policies developed and risk assessment completed. The committee looked closely at assessing our legal exposure, risks, and liability issues, looking at student employee forms, risk management concerns, and HR policies. And then the final icon there, secured PPE funding and prioritized funding allocations. We were evaluating which PPE expenditures will be covered by the CARES Act or FEMA reimbursement or finances or expenditures that might have to come out from the, come out of the college operations budget. Next slide, the Student Core Pillar. Classrooms and labs were focused on hands-on learning classes, labs, and some general education, adjusted for social distancing. Remember, class spaces will be reconfigured to account for social distancing guidelines. Other classes will be offered fully online or live online. Student services will be available on campus by appointment only, and events and activities remain online. I do know our athletic director, Davy Gill, is working very hard to put together a comprehensive program for our athletic and sports programs. The comeback timeline, as you can see, we're already into the middle of June. We continue to enhance our cleaning and sanitation of our campus buildings. I will say that our facilities department, under the leadership of Diana Wright, has done a great job of maintaining the sanitation of all of our buildings during the summer. And will continue to do so as you move into the fall or second phase of our plan. Along with that, they've prepared rooms for seating assignments, seating configuration, Plexiglas installation, and technology installations as well. At the present time, only essential employees and partners are allowed access to the campus based on departmental plans. As we move into Phase Two into July, again, we'll continue to limit faculty access to the campus for materials, instructional design, et cetera. And this will be coordinated through the campus provost and the deans. We have worked with the Barnes and Nobles Bookstore to coordinate textbook pickup and drop-off availability. And then once again, limited employee and partner access will continue to be enforced at that time. As we move into Phase Three into August, class schedule, we're looking at August the seventeenth. Again, up to twenty percent of course offerings making availability. Again, limited student services available on campus, expansion of employees returning to campus based on approved plans. And then as we move into January, we're looking at spring classes, capacity to be determined of face-to-face classes, expansion of student services available on the campus, and greater expansion of employees returning to the campus. I might add that the plan can be amended as needed as new information becomes available, such as data trends, health department guidelines, edicts from the governor's office, and again, direction from the Division of Florida Colleges. So with that said, I want to reiterate what Dr. Williams has said and indicated that the task force has worked very hard over the last several weeks to put together our plan. We've been meeting almost on a daily basis. The group would come together every Thursday. We will continue to have our meetings to continue to tweak our plan as needed, but certainly the college is to be commended for responding and recovery for this pandemic issue that we've been dealing with over the past several months. And with that, we're open. Any questions for myself, Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Does the board have any questions?
Chair Cole, I have one, if I may, and I want to thank everybody who is involved with this. I know the logistics is extremely difficult when we're dealing with multiple campuses and the amount of students that we are. And I think this is a fantastic start that we'll have to just continue to reassess and remain flexible with as we move forward. You can only do so much, unfortunately, but I think we're taking the right steps. This question may be more for President Williams. Are we, how are we keeping up with tutoring? Are we, how are we keeping up with tutoring and advisement services? I know a lot of that is online. Are we, is there a way to ensure that students are following up? And if they need help, they're getting the correct assistance that they need? I know it's more difficult if it's online and not face to face sometimes.
Perfect. Thank you for asking that. Trustee Stonecifer, yes, we have around the clock tutoring. If you guys recall, the foundation was so nice to help us get the tutoring and some testing services for all of our students. And we do have great numbers of students utilizing tutoring even more because it's 24/7, which is different than what it was when it was on campus. It was very limited. And so Matthew Bodie can, we can bring back and email the board the data on our tutoring service and its utilization. So we can put that together and send that to you, but we have those support services available. We also have faculty who've been helping students online as well. And then with advising, we actually already had a digital system that our advisors use to support students before COVID. And so it's been very easy for students to access it. I think the challenge has been for brand new students to the college and making sure that we have a good onboarding funnel for new students to find their way. And so Dr. Renard and the provost and others have already addressed a lot of that with our potential students and how to pull them through the funnel. Students can actually sign up for an appointment with an advisor personally online. They don't have to call. They can go right online and sign up for a time to have a Zoom call with an advisor to talk with them. Advisors are also meeting with students in groups as well. The advising piece is not 24/7 though. We don't have that. Some company or an organization that's providing those services 24/7. But our advisors do respond to students within a 24 hour time. If they email at two in the morning, they try to get to them on the same day. We also have a chat function, but you do know that our advising team, we have a full online team that handles online communications and requests. But now that all advisors are online, they too are using the same tools. We're also able to monitor the effectiveness of our advisors, how many students they've spoken with, what's going on? Did the student register? So we can even follow the whole funnel through to enrollment and can make sure that we know that we're moving forward. And so we're still doing that. I think the other piece is having that on campus presence. I do know that the team is recommending that we meet with students through appointments face to face. But I know that there are going to be students who walk on campus and we're going to need to be prepared to serve those students or potential students who come to campus. I hope I answered your question.
Absolutely.
Trustee Gibbons or Trustee Bello? Any questions? I had one about the threshold of the 20% of classes, courses on campus. Just the distinction between 20% capacity versus 20% courses. I know, I know this is a daily changing document, but when we had talked before, I had in my mind, there were more classes on campus. It's just that the capacity of those classes might be a hybrid or that there were fewer students. So I was just wondering if you could explain that.
Do you want to explain that, Bill? You're unmuted.
Well, yes, the 20% is the number of class offerings that we made, not necessarily the number of students in a classroom. And that's where we came down with that 20% number.
I think what Chair Cole is trying to find out is would the team be open to 30%? Or how did we get to 20% of our classes will be online? And I think that the group was focusing on those workforce based classes that cannot be basically offered online. Like nursing and dental hygiene, the police academy, the fire academy. Those programs you have to come together to do, and they wanted to make sure to keep the workforce based programs going and not stopping those programs. And then also looking at the general ed and support courses that students are struggling in online, in the online platform. And making sure that we have more on campus gen ed and support courses in those areas. So you have your anatomy and physiology, your microbiology, some of your math courses, communication. So they tried to look at what can we do for now socially distanced and make sure that the workforce programs keep going. And so that was the rationale for the 20%. If the enrollment presents itself and there are opportunities for us to grow beyond that on campus, we will. But we also have to look at campus density, our ability to spread out classes so that students are socially distanced where possible. And that can be very challenging as you look at classrooms that have 30 seats, you have 30 students. Okay, we can't knock this wall down. The auditorium is being used. Some colleges are having classes outside, which is risky due to rain and other weather. So we looked at the courses that the students may have struggled in the most online. We looked at the workforce based courses and we came up with 20%. Some colleges are less than that. Broward is going to remain 100% online. And so there's a big mixture depending on what's happening. Broward is an area where the coronavirus has high spikes. I mean, it's dead in Palm Beach, so they have a different scenario. But I would not say that we would not exceed 20% if the enrollment presented, you know, itself to be able to do that.
I guess I don't know what the other trustees feel, but I would not want to limit ourselves to only hosting 20% of courses on campus. I know there's a big, just a lot of discretion because we have so many campuses and we have so many courses we need to have live, like the ones you mentioned. But I feel like there's still an opportunity with our professors and with our students that if we have an on campus course and can properly social distance it. But then if a student perhaps wants to continue virtual learning, I mean, and I know it's extremely complicated. I don't mean to minimalize that. I just, I would not want to limit ourselves to only 20% on campus, I guess.
I think that if we can find the space and not have to knock walls down and, you know, to expand, we could do that. But some of it, some of it is definitely based on how we're set up as an institution and what the spaces look like and our ability to be. If we had a lot of auditorium like classrooms, it would be much easier than the classroom spaces that we have. And keep one instructor and have students in two rooms and trying to go between to socially distance. We also still have the hybrid as well, where some students can come to class that week. The others are at home online live and then they can switch back and forth. So we have to look at the space, the density and our faculty and their capacity and what we're able to do. I'll be happy to go back, Chair Cole, and take a look at that again and see where we land. But it certainly does not limit the number of classes we can offer and how we can be responsive to interests if enrollment grows, which is our goal.
Yeah, I guess I would just want, because obviously all of the comeback plans are beginning to be publicized and we're going to be very specific in communicating this to our students.
Right.
I don't like the headline of only 20% of our courses are going to be on campus. I don't know if we can do anything about that. I think I appreciate that 20% capacity might be the right number as opposed to courses. But I know it's complicated on how you get courses versus capacity. So I, I, that's just kind of my own feeling.
Colleges.
But if I'm alone in that feeling, then that's okay too.
Most colleges are not saying publicly, like UF just announced, and they said they will have a small offering of classes on campus. They didn't say 20%, but it was on the news this morning. It just says they'll have a small offering. It doesn't, so I don't think the plan is to go out and say, we're going to have 20%. But the plan is SPC will slowly migrate back on campus. We'll have a small number of courses on campus this semester focused on workforce based programs that cannot survive without any kind of social interaction. As well as high impact courses that students are struggling in in the online platform. But I don't think we should go out and say 20%. When I talk to other colleges, some of them are only doing workforce. Doing any gen ed. And so we're trying to look at our student population, what their needs are, what the challenges are. And also offer gen ed and support courses on campus to help those students improve and succeed in those platforms. Like I said, if there's a need, the enrollment shows in the spaces there, without us having to spend a lot of money to knock walls down or stuff like that to retrofit our space. We'll be, we'll be more than open to expanding that number. And perhaps 20% sounds scary, so, but we are taking it slow. As you know, in Florida, the numbers are spiking. Places are opening and closing within the same week because of the coronavirus. And so we're really being protective of our students and trying to be as supportive as we can. And we do have students who like online through Zoom. And so we want to be the best of both worlds. We want to provide the on campus experience. Our goal is to get back to a lot of that, but the world is dictating that there's a change. We're going to have to have a happy medium. So.
Yeah, I, yeah. I agree with, with Ms. Cole, but I think we're taking the right steps in doing this relatively slowly and easing into this. Because, you know, the optics are going to be even worse if we blow everything back open and then are accused of doing things in a dangerous manner. They got people infected or sick. So, you know, I would love to, to get as many people back in a classroom setting as possible too. But I think this is the only option right now, especially as we're watching how all this plays out in our state currently with businesses like mine. I think this is the best foot forward, as frustrating as it may be.
Understood. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Gray. No other comments. We'll move forward to our institutional priorities for 2021. And Dr. Williams and included, Dr. Williams sent out a report and she and I have been looking at the strategic work groups. And they revised overarching priorities. So each of you should have those. The four priorities are to create and facilitate a budget that supports institutional priorities, improve student learning. The increases student success and specifying the virtual capacities, improving technology. I think that's one that had been buried a little bit lower in our strategic priorities that has bubbled to the top in light of everything that's happening. And then increasing employee support services, communication and overall engagement. So we just wanted to share these. These are somewhat modified from what we previously had looked at with broader goals and priorities. And I didn't know if we wanted to have any further conversation on this or if you just wanted us to continue to provide the dashboard. I think it's important for us to provide the dashboard because those are looking at student success numbers and the budget and enrollment. But I had asked that Dr. Williams look at, okay, even though we're tracking this numbers, what are our true focus going to be from the team in light of all of these changes? So that's what we have. Or Dr. Williams, you have anything you would like to add on that or?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair Cole. You know, the board, you guys did a fantastic job in December. The goals that we have and the groups that we've set are very pertinent. It's unfortunate that COVID happened the week that we were going to have our first meeting. The goals that we originally set, I just want to reconfirm those and add a little bit of meat to them that Chair Cole talked about. So the first goal is academic excellence and the board champion is trustee Gibbons. And the whole priority of that subcommittee is to close the achievement gap. And that's what we talked about in December and the board set. So I think that with trustee Gibbons' leadership and help as a board champion, we can improve the success rates of our African American men. And we can increase student utilization of support services such as tutoring and other things to close the gap. So I still think that's very relevant and very important. And I just want to make sure we don't miss, miss that. The second one is economic mobility. Trustee Bridget Bello is the champion to drive enrollment growth, improve business and industry relationships, program effectiveness and increase short term high wage paying jobs. I think that's critical under workforce. The third thing that you led us to last December was community engagement. Trustee Kidwell is the champion and is to promote civic engagement and to me, increase the initiatives to support the community and build partnerships. And then the strategic work group for financial vitality is trustee Stonecifer. That's increasing non-state funding streams and diversifying. And I think realigning the budget to meet institutional priorities and financial capacity falls right in line with that. And then the final one is, is work group five, employee experience and engagement. Trustee, Chair Cole is the champion. And to ensure employee engagement and retention happens through strong communication, recognition and responsiveness. I think that because of the work we've done, it's really covered pretty clearly in what was decided last December. And all four of the more streamlined priorities fall under one of those five. Even the technology piece is going to be a big part of academic excellence and financial vitality as well as the employee experience. So I think that Chair Cole, the work that the board has done is superb. And I don't see a need to change it. I do think that what we have since COVID fits under those five, that we would still be able to focus on technology and making sure that training is done. That's going to help us with student success. It's also going to help us with the employee experience and also with finance and budget. Because I believe that once those things are taken care of, we'll be much, much stronger. Improving student learning is already there under closing the achievement gaps and improving the student experience and retention. So I think trustees, you, you guys have this. I think this, this is great. And we can go and add these pieces under the five work groups that you've created a while back.
How would you suggest to get things back on track with the trustees' involvement? And how are the, are the work groups back meeting again on campus that we can participate via Zoom or virtually? Or how, how can we be sure that we're participating as we thought we wanted to?
The recommendation that I have, Chair Cole, is that the committees resume in the fall.
Okay.
The board is not meeting in July. And so fall, we would start our committees back up and the board would be involved. You'll have fresh data and information to go on to get started, to see what our enrollment looked like, what the retention looked like for the whole year. What are some of the challenges? And I think it would give us a fresh start in August.
Okay. Any questions from the other trustees?
I think that makes sense. And, you know, by that point in time, we'll have a better idea of where we stand as an institution with all that's happened. And by our meeting in December, we can really pick this apart again and dig a little deeper and decide which specific directions we feel we need to go in based upon it. and decide which specific directions we feel we need to go in based upon at that point in time, nine months of data from, from the change, so, yeah.
Great. Anything else? All right. Moving on to our consent agenda, there, we had no old business on the agenda if, unless there's anybody who wants to raise an issue with respect to new business included in your packet. There's a number, personnel report, the equity report, which is something we annually do, our grants and restricted funds contracts and other old business regarding various purchasing types of things. So is there, are there any questions about the consent agenda? And if not, I would entertain a motion to take it in its entirety.
I have one question. The facade at the LA building on the St. Pete Gibbs campus, is that an age issue? Or what, what was the, what was the, the impetus for that to fall apart?
I believe it was an age issue. We have quite a few buildings that need some major uplifting. Diana has a plan to address those areas and we're just starting to move forward.
Okay. Is there a motion?
It looks like Chair Cole, we have that one walk-on item for the GMP downtown. If you, if the board members recall.
Oh, yes, sorry. I have it sitting right here. There is a remodel renovation of the downtown center. The approval sought for the board of trustees to authorize the president to act on the board's behalf to approve the 100% construction drawings and GMP for the build-out of shelled space at the downtown center. So this is with respect to the previously discussed renovations of downtown. And this was provided to you all. So that, and just confirming with Ms. Gardner or Dr. Williams that this is included, it should be included as, in our consent agenda.
Yes, yes, we can include it in consent.
Any questions?
Do we have, do we have any indication here on what the sale of the building looks like? The deal and the evaluation of, or any offers on, on that building?
Thank you, Trustee Gibbons. We do not have any firm offers, but we do have two groups interested that just started coming back after the COVID piece. A lot of people did not, I guess, want to walk through buildings. And so we have two right now in the hopper.
But they're not, they haven't made an offer.
No, matter of fact, I believe one was there just last week. They have not made an offer at this point.
Chair, can we take these items separately on the consent agenda? Just that item separately?
Sure, we can take that separately. There are motion for everything other than the build-out of the downtown center.
I, I moved to approve everything on the consent agenda minus the downtown center GMP.
Which we'll hear separately. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda as provided?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any opposed? Nay. And then we have the remodel and renovation of the downtown center. Mr. Gibbons, would you like to discuss it since you pulled it off?
Chair, I, the only thing is I have, I think I've been very clear in the past on, until we, especially now, until we sell the building or have a firm offer. Until we have a firm offer, I'd like to make sure, I, I'm gonna have to vote against it because I just want to make sure that we have funds available to do this. We don't know what enrollment's gonna look like. There's a lot of things. I expressed my concern. We initially talked about selling the building. So I'm still at the same spot on this one.
What's the?
And I, and I'm a firm believer that I, I would like to see administration in downtown St. Pete. But it's just not, I don't think it's the appropriate time to be spending money if we don't have a firm offer on the building.
What's the estimate of cost with this next step?
I do not have that with me right this second, but I can get that to you. We do have the resources to build right now to, to renovate. I do understand Trustee Gibbons' concern and he did question that during the previous meetings about that. He's, he's right. He did bring that up. But we're right now just asking for permission to approve the, the drawings and, and get that going so it doesn't take forever where we're wasting or losing 30 days or so. So I do understand his concern and recommendation.
Chair. I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Chair.
I was just gonna say, so we, we'll still have the, the ability down the road to approve this prog, this project moving forward.
Yes.
I, I have a question if, if this has a financial impact at all because this is, the approval requested is to approve the drawings. We're not approving the contract yet, right? So that you're still negotiating the contract.
Right.
Chair Cole and trustees, this is approving the drawings and the GMP, but we have not negotiated a price yet. Also, Trustee Gibbons, to address the funding, we set aside specific funding for the renovation and remodel of the downtown building and the BT building at Clearwater. We have a sufficient reserve in the capital fund. So it's not, it's not affecting the operating fund, which is about 50% of the enrollment. This is specifically in the Capital Seven Fund. So I'm not sure if that will address some of your concern, but we did plan to set aside that funding last fiscal year or this current fiscal year.
It's fine. Thank you for the explanation. You all told us that a while ago that you were putting that money aside. I think it was Mr. Miles came to us with this proposal originally. I just am where I am on this, especially where we have not had any guidance on what the, what's gonna happen with the budget at the state. I, I'm just, I'm not sold. And why would we be? And it has some fiscal impact because we're gonna hire somebody to go out and do these drawings. No matter what, there is a fiscal impact. And the second thing is we don't have an offer on the building. So why would we renovate or start to even move toward the direction of renovation when we don't have an offer on the facility? And I know we, Dr. Williams and everybody else is gonna say, oh, but we're disposing of this facility. That's fine. We have not disposed of it and we do not have funding from it. So I would like to see us be more fiscally sound. As a businessman, I'm telling you, I would not be renovating other buildings until I knew I had some, a sale. And I, I mean, that's just where I am on it. We, I, I'm not gonna belabor at this point, Madam Chair. I hope we can move forward and vote on it any way that you like.
Thanks, Mr. Gibbons. And I, I agree with a lot of what you're, what you're saying. The only issue I see is if, um, perchance, which who knows what that is at this point, we do get an offer on that building and they want to take occupancy of it and let's say 90 days after a closing, we're gonna have to have someplace to go with everybody that's currently in there. So I agree, I do not want to pull the trigger on, on this entire project until we're further down the road there. But I think, I think we do need to take a tiny step forward just to stay a little bit ahead of this so that we're not stuck without a place to go.
I would agree. I would agree with you, Trustee Stonecypher. Only thing is, we have several campuses. We could come up probably with a plan to move a lot of people to different places and then, and then, and plan appropriately as opposed to planning to spend money first. You know, that's not what organizations do normally is plan to spend first instead of having, coming up with a plan to move.
Understood.
Dr. Williams, can you ballpark? I mean, I think it's gonna be difficult at this point to make a decision not having any idea. Are we talking about, you know, a hundred bucks or a million bucks or, you know, somewhere in between?
For the renovation of.
No.
For the drawings?
For the drawings that are being requested to be authorized under this.
Yeah, I don't know the exact amount for the drawings. I can get that to you. Those are some of the things that we'll bring back. I can email you before the end of day.
Yeah, I guess, I, I, I agree that, so I guess there's a couple of things that are going through my mind that I will inarticulately share just in an effort to try to think about this. So this is coming out of the capital budget, which we can never use for operations anyway. So if it's not used for capital improvements, it's just gonna sit there?
That is correct.
That's correct, okay. Secondly, this action for the board is to eventually approve construction drawings, but have those drawings begun yet?
We do have the drawings we could share with, with the board. I believe we had some of the preliminary drawings shared a few months back.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm wondering is have the approval, I'm trying to separate to Mr. Gibbons' point, the approval of construction drawings and finishing that up versus approving the GMP for the actual construction versus authorizing negotiations. So we have a contract in place that will be brought back to the board. Because in my mind, there seems to be three distinct things.
So we were hoping to get started as soon as we could. And so I hear that the board has concerns about starting the project without selling the building, even though we do have the funds available. The other question was how much will it cost for the draws? It's about $240,000, Trustee Bello.
So we can separate out actions?
So, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Trustee Gibbons.
Chair, it sounds like they already have preliminary drawings. So what are we approving?
That, that's why I wanted to be clear is to what this ask was. This is just to approve the 100% drawings.
So they, they spent money without asking us in the first place. So why are they coming back to ask us for approval to go forward? If you have preliminary drawings, why do we need to do that? I would make a motion that when they have a firm contract offer, we'll give the president the authority to negotiate all these things moving forward. But until then, why are we spending that? And the governor hasn't made or the legislature hasn't made it clear to us what we're gonna be doing with our budgets, whether this is a capital outlet budget or not. This is not our money. It's the legislature's. It's not St. Pete College's money.
Well, it's actually the people's money.
Well, it's the people's money, but the legislature directs us, directs us how to spend this, doubt the dollars. And if they come back with something else after they go back and deal with budget cuts and vetoes and come back to something and we've already spent the dollars, how we know what to do?
Are you concerned about, so we've already engaged a firm to do the planning and sign the contract for the architectural plans. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm getting this.
Hello, could, I'd like to add Diana to the panelists, please. PJ, could you please add Diana?
I think it'd be helpful to have the current status because this has been to the board in the past, including when we just saw our plans previously. And I imagine that the construction drawing contract is below the threshold that would even come to the board, so.
Okay, Diana is now in the panelists.
Thank you, Diana. Good morning, Ms. Wright. Thank you for joining us. Could you tell us the status and the timing of what's happened to date versus what's being requested now?
She, she has to be unmuted. Someone, please unmute her.
Diana, you're unmuted, but we don't see you. You can't speak still.
We can see her but not hear her.
No.
It might be a setting on your computer.
You might wanna log out and try it again. She can't get unmuted.
She's on my cellphone. Can you all hear her?
It's a lot of.
We, we will probably be able to. Other is turned off.
You can't do the cellphone. So why don't we do this? Let's table this.
Okay.
And just move on.
Okay, I think what's important, because last month, the board did authorize the negotiations already with the contractor. And so that was already done. So if this is, I, I, if this was just the authorization to sign that contract, I think what we're hearing is that we're not comfortable signing the contract right now. But if we're separating the plans and we just need to know what the plans are, I don't know how the board feels about that.
We did bring the plans to the board and the board approved the plans. I was hoping Diana could tell us a little bit about, did we already get someone to draw everything in detail? And has that been done? Because they, the plans were approved by the board. I do understand the concern about not signing on officially with a contractor. And so maybe we can amend that and just hold, we'll hold to the fall.
Is it possible, Chair Cole, if we're gonna table this to potentially have a short board of trustees meeting in July to just discuss this with Diana so that we can either decide to move forward or not and lose, not lose that much time?
I think that that's important because otherwise we're waiting till August and I'm concerned from a timing standpoint.
I mean, it could be a 30-minute Zoom meeting with all the details in front of us. We can pass this out and, and then move forward either way.
So Ms. Wright just gave a update via the chat room that says this is a construction management at-risk project. The architect was selected through the continuing contracts that the college has. And last month, the board already approved the construction management firm.
Right.
So this is simply the continuation of the, I, I think, my impression was this is a continuation of the negotiation of the contract, signing the contract, but not necessarily moving forward to spend money or is it not even signing contract? It's moving forward the negotiations of the contract.
Chair Cole.
Uh huh.
Suzanne? Yes, you're, you're correct. Last month, we did approve the contractor for that project. And so the next step is to move forward to negotiations and for them to provide the GMP. So Dr. Williams has an estimate of that and that's what was on the board memo. But the actual GMP, I believe, has not been finalized. But when that is approved, then the project would move forward. So we're in the, we're in the negotiations. And I believe that we're looking to get a finalized GMP within this next month.
Chair Cole, I'm still okay to, I'm still okay to vote on that currently if, if we don't want to table this to keep the process moving since we're kind of right in the middle.
Diana, yes, Diana, since we can see you. Have we already paid a portion of the $240,000 that we're talking about? Is that something that's already been paid for?
And we approved $240,000? Because I don't remember that being in any packet that we were approving $240,000 as a board.
That's probably below our threshold of what we have to approve. But so when the board brought back, when they brought back. But so when the board brought back, when they brought back the plans, we approved the drawings at that time.
I don't think 240,000 is below our threshold.
Well, we definitely talked about getting the drawings put together.
It was a year ago, trustee Gibbons.
I, I, okay. Look, I'm okay with voting on it. Let's just vote. I'm going to vote no. It's okay. It's all right.
And 325,000 is the board's threshold.
Okay.
I move that we continue on with negotiations per the memo that was in our board packet for today's meeting to come up with a GMP.
Is there a second? Or a second for the purpose of discussion? Um, no, I us, I mean, if what I'm understanding is correct, I will second it. Because all we're saying, based on what I'm reading in the in the chat, is they can't take another step without the 100% drawing. So this is going to completely stop any movement on that project if we do not approve.
Why do we need 100% drawings right now without an offer on a building? That's what I'm trying to figure out. When we could just authorize the president to move when we get a firm offer on the building.
That could be your motion, trustee Gibbons. That was not the motion last month when we brought everything forward. And so if the board wishes to change its motion, then go forward with that.
It doesn't sound like you need our approval. If the threshold is 325,000 and the drawings are 240, why do you, what do you, why do you need our approval?
Well, first, we try to be as transparent as possible to bring things forward. And so we thought it would be important that we brought this forward so that the board would be aware and would also grant us its blessings to move forward.
Ms. Wright, can you, where are, at what point in the drawings are we? I know we generally have 20%, 50%, 100% drawings on projects. We're on design development, okay.
Chair Cole, if I may?
Yes.
The GMP is not usually established until you have the 100%. So the next step would be the 100% drawings. And then the contractor would provide the GMP, which we would either approve or renegotiate. So that would be the sequence.
And would we sign a contract with the contractor so long as it doesn't exceed that 2.2? Or would that?
I think that was, that was the authorization that Dr. Williams was seeking today. If we had the 100% drawings and the GMP, that she would have authority to move forward with it up to do it up to 2.2.
So may I suggest that if that that can be perhaps the delay, we get the drawings done and the contract negotiated, but we don't let that contract until we have a firm, until we have an offer on the district office? Trustee Gibbons, would that alleviate your concerns?
Repeat that.
That we move forward with this authorization, but the contract for the GMP is not executed and activated, for lack of a better word, or effective until we have an offer?
I I mean, I had, I have a motion on the floor. Y'all can vote it down and then move on to the next motion. I'm, I don't think that will alleviate my concerns. I don't understand why we're moving it forward without, in this time and climate, while we're moving something forward without an offer. So I am right. It's okay.
Okay, so the existing motion is trustee Stone Cypher's.
No, my motion was on the floor first, Madam Chair.
I don't know that there was a second for your motion, trustee Gibbons.
I don't think there was for mine either.
There was a second for yours because she called for a second on mine. There was never a call for a second. It was a point of order.
We can rewind, trustee Gibbons. Would you like to restate your motion, please?
It died, it died for lack of a second. Let's move on.
So, Madam Chair, if you want to rephrase what you said, since neither of them had a second, so that we can vote on this thing and move on? So I was suggesting that to alleviate trustee Gibbons' concerns, we can authorize pursuant to the memo with the additional condition that contracts are not executed or let until there's an offer on the district headquarters building. The construction GMP contract is not effective. I can't make that motion, but that was just an idea that might.
Make it a motion.
I'll second it.
So trustee Bello, is that you'll move that with the additional, move approval with the additional condition that the effectiveness of the contract is delayed?
Yes, I I do agree with him about that part. I don't think it's time to spend $2 million right now until we know what's going on or until the building sold. I I agree with with trustee Gibbons on that.
And Ms. Gardner, I'll look to you. Is that clear how that was stated, that condition?
It sounded clear, yes.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is.
Just for clarification, that, I mean, that, that's what we discussed months ago. So this isn't anything new. We never wanted to move forward with actual construction until we knew what was going to happen with the sale of the the district office.
Correct. So there's a motion with the recommendation of Dr. Williams as amended by with the additional condition, motion by trustee Bello, a second by trustee Stone Cypher. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you. And thank you, trustee Gibbons, for highlighting that on the timing. So, um, did we, and forgive me, I've lost track. Did we have? I think we already voted on the balance of the consent agenda items.
We did.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, there are information reports from the direct support organizations. Um, I also just wanted to highlight in that the ISPS report. Trustee Bello, you're doing an amazing job with that organization. Not that all of our direct service organizations aren't doing great things, but especially right now, some of the programs that are being planned and discussions are really impressive. So thank you for your leadership there. And and next, we have our board self evaluation is also in there in your package just for what for your own approval and review. And then there is a report about construction contract approvals to our last conversation that didn't exceed 325,000 and therefore didn't come to the board. So you see those in, but we do get that quarterly report. So with that, I'd like to move on to the president's evaluation annually. The board is asked to evaluate presidents. Four of the five trustees have provided those evaluations and they're included in the packet. So you can see trustee Kidwell met with Dr. Williams last month, even though he's not here, or last week, excuse me, as did trustee Stone Cypher and trustee Bello to review their evaluations with Dr. Williams. We do this annually as is required by the state, as well as is required by our contract with Dr. Williams. And I'd open the floor for discussion, but I would like to highlight that I would hope that at the end of discussion, we can, I, we can entertain a motion to extend Dr. Williams' contract an additional year. So with that, are there any comments or questions about the compiled president's evaluation, which is in the packet? Thank you for those who took the time to complete it and to meet with Dr. Williams. I know each of us know her well enough to know that she values our input and wants to have those very candid discussions and was on each of us to meet with us and receive that feedback. So thank you. And with that, we do, if we want her to continue in her role here, need to work on extending that contract. And I'm pulling up my cheat sheet here, excuse me. There was one change in the contract that Dr. Williams and I talked about. Generally, Ms. Gardner simply amends the effective date and the termination date in the, or not termination date, expiration date of the contract annually and left it the same. We caught a a kind of fluke about her, Dr. Williams' car in it, that the way the contract reads, it allows for a new car annually with the commencement date. And that was obviously not the intent. But in having that conversation and cleaning up that language, we wanted to be clear. Also, Dr. Williams had asked if they could remove the mileage restriction for the college. Right now, there's 1,000 miles per month mileage restriction on her college car. As we know, how many times Dr. Williams has been going to Tallahassee and even driving back and forth to all of our campuses around Pinellas County makes that mileage restriction some somewhat impossible to to comply with. So I would ask if there is a motion to extend Dr. Williams' contract and remove the limit on mileage for her college owned vehicle. So paragraph D of her employment college would or employment contract would read, "The president will be provided with the use of a suitable college owned and maintained SUV vehicle to be used by her for all college needs and personal needs," period. So with that, I will open it up for discussion and perhaps entertain a motion. Is it a lease vehicle? Is there a reason for there to be a mileage limitation on it? Is it a lease?
I don't think, no, it's not a lease. It's just the same verbiage from the previous president's contract. And I'm just driving a lot, especially during session. And that's a lot of mileage and a lot of time. And so I always get nervous because I'm not quite complying with that in certain months. And it may average out over the year, I guess, but I mean, it just seems to be restrictive. It causes me to pause sometimes.
Yeah, even even on a lease, you're usually allowed 15,000 miles a year. So I I have no issue with that.
Yeah.
I would just, only question I would have is how many other presidents have had the same amount of miles they comply with that?
Say that again, trustee Gibbons?
Of legal, how many quite, how many presidents, Suzanne, have had the same amount of mileage and were able to comply with it?
I think our previous president did have that same language the whole time he was at, you know, at SPC. I don't recollect exactly what we had for the president before that, but I would believe it would be something very similar, 1,000 miles per month.
I move to extend the contract one year and include the new mileage language.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, congratulations, Dr. Williams. Glad you're still here. Pardon?
I'm not sure I agree with the mileage thing. Wish we had, we would have taken that up separately. I'm not, I mean, if other presidents were able to do that, I'm a little, I don't want to start setting precedent by changing every rule for every president. You know, if they were able to do, live within the guidelines of 1,000 miles, I, you know, that's why I asked, you know, what was Dr. Cutler? What was, you know, Bill and so on, so we could figure that out.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I don't remember, and I don't know about Dr. Cutler because I wasn't there. Excuse me, but I don't remember Dr. Law traveling nearly as much as as I've seen Dr. Williams travel and as much as I've seen her go up to session and as many speaking opportunities and business leaders, opportunities and meetings. And I don't want her to not do those things because she's afraid that she's breaking her contract. If it comes back with an excessive amount of miles, you know, I don't even know what that would be, but let's say 20,000 miles, then maybe we revisit it. But it's not a leased vehicle. There's no reason to limit it. And I I don't want her to feel like she shouldn't go to Tallahassee or she shouldn't speak at a Illinois Business Alliance or, you know, all of those different things that I've seen her do because she's afraid of running over on her mileage.
I would disagree with you, Ms. Bello, on the business stuff locally. But as far as being in Tallahassee, Bill was there probably far more than Dr. Williams. He was there back and forth. Some days he would come up and come back and go back. So as far as going to the legislature, you know, and back and forth from Tallahassee, I would, you know, probably disagree with you. But locally, I have no idea about how much Bill or she could drive. But I just, I don't want to start changing rules for every president. Then the next president will say he needs 25,000 or she needs 25,000. And the next one says 30,000 and then we just keep up and up and it just has a bad precedence in my mind.
Well, I'm I'm a firm believer in taking facts as they are and and trusting for responsible governance and for somebody who has penny pinches and makes us all pay our own way, even when we're with her at these meetings and lunches. I feel confident that Dr. Williams at this point won't do anything to break our trust with respect to her mileage. And and I'm comfortable with that. So moving on to our next item, we do have some items with respect to collegiate high school that we actually need to address. And so if you can turn to those pages, if there's no other business to come before the board of the college trustees, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn so we can reconvene as the collegiate high school board.
Trustee Cole, before we adjourn, I do have a few things from the president's report.
Okay.
In reference to Tallahassee. We are still waiting for the governor to review the budget and decide what he's going to approve. We are getting signals and information from several people, including our lobbyists and Eric from the board, I mean, from the state, that he may be approving the budget pretty soon. And there's some indication that, you know, there may be some cuts, but not huge cuts. As soon as we get the governor's approval or changes to our budget, we're going to send it out to the board. So you'll know this is where we landed, should it come this week or next week. We have been spending a lot of time with the commissioner and chancellor on the line in reference to the budget, in reference to funding and challenges that colleges are having. The good news is we are not in in the same shape as some of the other institutions. And so as soon as the governor makes a decision on the budget, we will be making sure that we get that to you so you'll know where we are there. And we'll amend our budget accordingly, according to whatever changes he makes or if he ends up vetoing anything. So we'll, we'll be going from there. I just wanted to make sure you guys know that we're still working with our lobbying firm. They're keeping us aware of what's going on and that we're getting some feedback that it should be coming pretty soon.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the collegiate high school board, please.
I move for adjournment.
I see Ms. Bello stepped away and did Mr. Gibbons leave the meeting?
I second, sorry, I had put in the chat that I was going to grab a bottle of water.
That's okay. I I saw that you had stepped away for that. So all in favor to adjourn and reconvene if that was your motion? Mr. Stone Cypher, please say aye.
It was, aye.
Aye. Any opposed, name? And I think it's down to the. Any opposed? Name? And I think it's down to the three of us, so please stay on the line. Trustees Bello and Stone Cypher. And with that, Ms. Metz and Mr. Call.
Good morning, Chair Cole, board members and Dr. Williams. My name is Dean Call. Oh, good morning. I'm the principal of SPCHS on the Tarpon Springs campus, and I'm joined by my colleague.
Oh, Ms. Giles, sorry. I failed to include you.
I'm joined by my colleague, Raquel Giles, the principal of SPCHS on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus, and by the associate vice president for Collegiate High School, Starla Metz. We're excited to be here to share with you our budgets for the upcoming school year, two consent items, and our highlights from this past school year. Next slide, please. So we'll start with the budget for the Tarpon Springs campus. SPCHS Tarpon Springs had a great first year, and the budget reflects increases due to an increase in student enrollment. Each grade level will have an increased number of students, with the largest increase coming in our senior class. The revenue from K through 12 state funding will be 1.3 million, $10,794. Next slide, please. Some of our major expenses include personnel and textbooks for students. Uh, next slide. And we also have some additional operating expenses to make sure the school runs properly. Next slide, please. And finally, we have our total expenditures, which are 1.2 million, 75,668. And that's our budget. And now I'll turn it over to principal Giles.
Good morning, everyone. Chair Cole, members of the board and Dr. Williams, I'd like to present the budget for the Gibbs campus. The funding source does come from the Florida Education Finance Program, and as you see, that will be 1.4 million dollars. Uh, our capital outlay is $80,000. Our Title II reimbursement, uh, we have received $8,000 from Pinellas County Schools. And our total funding source will be 1,576. Now, our expenses will exceed our budget, so we will be tapping into reserves. Next slide, please. We do have our personnel cost, as you'll be able to see. Our total personnel cost is 948,000. The current expenses, again, that professional development is less than last year. We're only using, uh, from Title II from Pinellas County Schools. We've increased our minor equipment. We really want to make sure that if we have to go back to face-to-face because of COVID, our students have the materials and supplies they need. And so we're hoping that we're able to do a one-to-one initiative. Next slide, please. Professional services you see there, um, we, you see the difference in that. It's going to be a one-year contract for our audit instead of a three-year contract, as in the past. There's an increase in our food amount for this year. We anticipate that many more of our students will qualify for free and reduce lunch because of COVID. And so we're certainly putting that into the budget. Our total current expenses are 626,000. Next slide, please. So our total budgeted expenditures is 1.5 million, uh, 76,577. We will have healthy reserve of 1,314. Next slide, please. So before we go ahead and introduce Ms. Metz, I would like to ask, are there any questions about the budget?
I have one. Do we anticipate having to dip into reserves, um, the next year? Or is it, are we thinking this is a one-time thing?
We're hoping it's a one-time thing, um, and we don't anticipate that we would have to dip into reserves next year. If there are no further questions, may I please request permission to approve the board for St. Pete Collegiate High School Gibbs Campus and St. Pete Collegiate High School North Pinellas Campus?
Yes, is there a motion?
I move to approve, uh, the budgets of, um, both collegiate high schools.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I forgot, failed to ask for discussion. Ms. Bello, did you have any other discussion? Okay, thank you. All right.
Good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board and Dr. Williams. I'm Starla Metz. Thank you for the opportunity to bring forth two items on the consent agenda this morning. The first item allows St. Petersburg Collegiate High Schools to provide additional support to our students by opting into the Pinellas County Schools' mental health plan instead of receiving a small allocation at each school. The second item, the use of the Pinellas County Schools' student threat assessment policy and protocols. Approval is requested, uh, for us to use these when we are doing student behavioral threat assessments by the Florida Department of Education Office of Safe Schools. Do you have any questions for me? Then may I please request approval of the consent agenda?
Your motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you very much. It's now my pleasure to turn it back over to principal Giles. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Is there any discussion about the approval of the consent agenda? Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
My apologies, Ms. Giles.
And now to the really good news. We're just so excited that we've been able to continue in the excellence that was established at the collegiate high schools. As you can see, great things are still happening. U.S. News and World Report named our schools 2020 best high schools. We continue to be designated an A school by the FLDOE. And our students were first place in the Pinellas County Schools Ethics Bowl competition. This was a tremendous feat considering we were competing against other prestigious high schools in Pinellas County. And those schools had up to four and five teams. Our girls, we only had one team and we brought home the victory. So we're very proud of them.
Right.
We also had five students that were selected as peer ambassadors. So if you visit the peer anytime soon, you'll be seeing some SPCHS students. Next slide, please. The picture's here. You'll see our school was named, uh, top 5,000 STEM high schools. We, we were named by NEACH the best high school in the Tampa metro area. 62% of our graduates graduated with honors. And what we're really proud of is that 20% of our students remaining are remaining at SPC. So we're really proud of that number. And lastly, we had two students, um, compete and win for PTSA Reflections contest. And those two students will go on to the national competition. Next slide. And lastly, we have our accreditation survey. This is an annual climate and culture survey that we give to our students, our parents, and our teachers. And we use multiple sources of data to drive improvement for our school process. We look at this data. It, it's very good to see that we are trending above the network average. But we continue to make sure that we analyze all sources of data to put in improvement and use that for our school improvement goals. Thank you. And now, Dr. Call.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. At Tarpon Springs, our number one goal this year was to establish the culture that makes SPCHS unique and successful. You can see from our survey data that both our students and our parents have really embraced the collegiate way and are excited for the opportunity to build that positive culture at our new school. Tarpon Springs Campus joined St. Pete Gibbs Campus in scoring above average in each area that Cognitia measures for successful schools. So we're really excited about our students and how they've embraced not just being at the college campus, but also being members of the collegiate high school. Next slide, please. So in order to build that culture, our faculty and staff focus on student engagement. And we have lots of clubs for the students, held lots of events, and volunteering in the community. We held our very first school dance. We had our very first spirit week, very first poetry slam, and lots and lots of ice cream socials. Students volunteered on campus. They also took part in, uh, community cleanups and volunteered at several events sponsored by the local Rotary Clubs. Next slide, please. And our students were also extremely successful in the classroom. All of our seniors graduated. That was exciting. In the fall, we had a 94% student success rate. In the spring, we had a 93% student success rate. Uh, we did get some standardized testing in this year, even though it was canceled in the spring. And so 93% of the SPCHS students that passed the Florida Standards Assessment ELA retake. And one of our students, we're very proud, she was selected to be, represent the city of Clearwater in the Sister City Exchange Program in Nagano, Japan. And that's it, and we're open for questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Giles, Mr. Call, and Ms. Metz. Are there any questions with respect to the collegiate high school? Wonderful, um.
I'm just very proud of them, Chair Cole. Um, they have done just a fantastic job. Starla, thank you for your leadership and, um, you know, Dr. Giles and Call. We, we appreciate you all for what you've done. And you started a brand-new school up there in Tarpon, and you made it work. Raquel, you came in and rocked it, um, at St. Pete Gibbs. And so we're very proud of the work you've done. And our collegiate high school students really bring flavor, um, to the campus and to the classrooms, even if they're clicking online. So I really am proud of the work you've done with graduations. I'm very proud to see the yard signs and all of the unique things that you guys have done to make the students, um, very proud to be a St. Pete College Titan. Um, I did not know about the 2020, uh, U.S. News report, so that was pretty good. Uh, congratulations. We're very proud of the work that you're doing, the lives you are changing. And keeping 20% of them, that's amazing, that they're here to stay. So I'm just very proud of you guys and the work you've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Uh, with that, sorry, I'm losing my, um, I think that concludes all of our business. If there's no other business to come before, the board, I will certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all so much for the great work on behalf of the collegiate high school and St. Pete College. And, um, I'm pleased to say that our next meeting in August will be at our new Student Success Center on the Gibbs Campus, which is thrilling. We all can't wait to see people, some of you in person there. I know not everybody will be able to attend because of social distancing, but we're certainly happy, um, to, that at least the five of us will be able to see one another in person and with Dr. Williams and some of her team. So thank you all so much and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day, everyone.